We good? Okay. Welcome, Council. We've got us all here. Thank you all for your old chipper and ready to go today. We appreciate staff being here and it looks like it's just staff that we have here and the Council. And we're glad that you're here. So it's Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. This is the Bountiful City Council Work Session, 6:00 PM. And we know that the public is invited, but we don't have any of the public here. We will go, we'll go forward. We, we're going to turn, we're going to turn time over to Clint, who's going to give us training. Is that right, Clint?
Yes.
You're going to give us training in Council. Let's see, what are you going to do? Open Meetings Training. Thank you. Yeah, that's what it is.
Sounds good to me.
Do we give it in public speaking?
Kate has eyes behind her head too, so she...
Hey, by the way, Clint, we're lucky to have you. All the things that have been going on in the city and all the things you've done to protect us, we know why we pay you to be part of the team.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks. Thanks for all that you do. Big impact.
So this is going to probably feel repetitive for most of you, if not all of you. And I apologize for that, but the law doesn't, hasn't really changed and therefore the presentation doesn't really change. As you know, you're, as City Council members and some of the other various responsibilities that you might have, require you to have Open and Public Meetings Act training at least once a year. So I like to do it in the first or second meeting of, of January of each year to just get it taken care of. So that's what we're here doing today. So we'll just go over the purpose of, of the Act. And it's to conduct the people's business in the open. Pretty, pretty obvious. It is the intent of the legislature that the state, its agencies and political subdivisions take their actions openly and conduct their deliberations openly. So pretty simple there. We've got a lot of public responsibilities and public duties and what we're, we are required to do most of, almost all of what we do in a public meeting. So what is a meeting? The law says that a meeting means the convening of a public body or a specified body with a quorum present, including a workshop or an executive session, whether in person or by means of electronic communications, for the purpose of discussing, receiving comments from the public about or acting upon a matter over which the public body or specific body has jurisdiction or advisory power. So two things that are not meetings, a chance gathering or a social gathering. This is the midnight run to the drugstore for some cough medicine. And you run into a couple of council members that may have caught the same bug and there you are. That's not a meeting. And a social meeting, examples of that would be a Christmas, a city Christmas party lunch or a, yeah, a lunchtime training or something along those lines where it's for the purposes of, of a social meeting. So this slide got more meaningful this year. Electronic meetings. Electronic meetings can be held without everybody in the same room. And we've been able to utilize that this past year. It's important to note that the notice requirements still apply. A public, the, the public must have a means to attend to. So there has to be a, a anchor location. This would have been, this is our anchor location until we get into the City Hall. And once we're in City Hall, that would be the anchor location. Those electronically attending must be able to communicate verbally or electronically so that each member of the public body is able to hear or observe the communication. And there must be an existing rule or resolution or ordinance. And that's why we've had that two or three times where we've extended it out just to include all of our different boards or sorry, commissions and, and the City Council. So closed meetings, closed meetings are the, the hot topic or the, the thing that the whole purpose of the meet is to conduct the, the public's business in the open. So why do we have closed meetings? Well, we can't have closed meetings. Note that a couple of things. It's only for limited reasons and it has to start in an open meeting. The reasons that they can be held, I've got there here in this bullet point to discuss an individual's character, professional competence or physical or mental health, to discuss security personnel devices or systems, investigative proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct, strategy sessions to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease or sale of real property. And then of course, on that one, I've got the, the little sub bullet point there. Public notice of terms and approval of sale must be in an open meeting. So in that case, when you're buying, selling or leasing property, it makes a whole lot of sense to not have that discussion in the open because of course then the buyer or the seller would listen and could take advantage of that. So we're able to do those things in closed sessions. However, any sales or transactions must be done according to Utah law and, and in an open meeting. Votes cannot be cast in a closed meeting. Are there any meetings that must be closed? The answer is no. The decision to close a meeting is, to the public is always discretionary. Now, there's lots of good reasons. We just went over one on the, on the property of why we would have it closed. But some of these others seem pretty obvious to investigative proceedings. You wouldn't want to spoil an investigation. To discuss security personnel devices or systems, we wouldn't want to advertise what our security systems were. And then of course, in discussing an individual's professional competence or character or physical or mental health could be embarrassing. So the process for a closed meeting must have a quorum present. Two thirds of the body must vote to close the meeting. The body must first hold a public meeting with proper notice before entering the closed meeting. And the public body must, the body must publicly disclose the vote by name of each member for, for or against entering into the closed meeting, which is why we do the roll call vote, the reasons for holding the closed meeting and the location of the closed meeting. What is prohibited in a closed meeting? You may not approve any ordinance, resolution, rule, regulation, contract or appointment. You can't interview or discuss a person to fill an elected position. And you can't take any final action. Final votes must be done, open in an open, in an open meeting and on the record. There's also, closed meetings are also, as you know, closed meetings are also recorded. There is one exception to that, and that is the character and the competency of the individual. In order to not record a closed session about the character or competency of an individual, the mayor is required to, if the decision is made not to record, then the mayor must sign an affidavit stating that the only thing discussed in the meeting was the character or competency of an individual. It doesn't have to state who the individual is or what the issue, or what the issues were, but there must be a signed and sworn affidavit from the mayor stating as much. And again, that's done for privacy reasons, not to embarrass in some, somebody. So all of our public meetings require notice. There's a written notice that the meeting will be held. It needs to be in at least one local paper of general circulation. It must be on the Utah Public Notice website and it must be at least 24 hours prior to the posted meeting. And there must be an agenda which includes the items with reasonable specificity about what you're going to act upon or discuss, the date, the time and the place. There are a few exceptions to the 24 hour notice and those are prescribed very specifically in law where it would require more notice, but in general, it's 24 hours. This is another one that we've unfortunately had our opportunity to experience recently. And that's emergency meetings. The law allows for meetings for emergency and urgent matters. In that case, we give the best notice practicable, practicable. And the minutes must include a statement of the unforeseen circumstances that made the meeting necessary. So the, the most recent example of that would be a huge windstorm where the City Council needed to convene to discuss operations of the city and all the impacts of, of a storm. So that would be one of those. And in that case, we gave the best practicable notice, which was on our social media channels and on our website. Meeting records are written minutes and recordings of public meetings must be kept. Both the written minutes and recordings of open meetings are public records. The requirements of minutes must include the date, time and place of a meeting, names of members present and absent, the substance of all matters proposed, discussed or decided, names and substance of information from individuals giving testimony or comments, individual votes on each matter and any additional information requested by a member. So pending minutes must be made available to the public within 30 days after the, holding an open meeting when minutes are awaiting a formal approval. And they just must clearly indicate that they're draft minutes in the meantime. What happens if there's a violation? Utah Code 52-4-305 says, "In addition to any other penalty under this chapter, a member of the public body who intentionally violates or intentionally abets or advises a violation of the closed meeting provisions of this chapter is guilty of a Class B misdemeanor." Keyword there is intent. In criminal law, there has to be a mental state that you have to prove in order to find somebody guilty of, of a criminal act. In this case, it's intentional. So there must be an intentional act that is done in order for there to be a Class B misdemeanor. Under that same chapter, what are the remedies? A court can void any action in violation of the law. Sometimes violation can be cured by discussing and take a, taking a public vote in a subsequent meeting. So if some, if, if there was something that wasn't noticed properly or something that we missed, that was brought to our attention, then the, the cure oftentimes is just to renotice it and revote on it. And the courts, if it gets to a court, the, a court can award court costs and attorney's fees. It's not a shall, but they may. So these are the people or organizations that can enforce the Open and Public Meetings Act. The courts can, obviously, the Attorney General can. More common and more locally, it would be the county attorney. And that would be typically looking at criminal violations. And then the private citizen who is an aggrieved party that can also file suit. They have 90 days to pursue a corrective action. And that's because as time goes by, things become more and more difficult to undo. If we, if the City Council approves a transaction that involves a lot of moving parts and money and, and effort, then it wouldn't make sense to allow that to be undone two years later. So there's a 90 day cap on that unless it involves bonds, notes or debt, then it's 30 days for the same reasons. And then my favorite quote, sunlight is the best disinfectant. So you guys do a great job of making sure that your actions and deliberations are done in public. I commend you for that. It's something that I'm committed to and, and take very seriously as the Chief Legal Officer for the city. And we'll continue to follow those things and, and do our best. Are there any questions or comments? So Gary, I don't know how much time you want for the other one. We could do the Ethics Act if you want to too, which would be another 10 minutes or so.
So I think we scheduled like 50, like 20, 25 minutes for this.
So do you want me to get through the other one?
It's up to, it's up to Council Mayor if you want to do that later or you want to do that now. Think?
Get it done?
Well, what we're, what we're doing, if we can go forward, the, the other part of, of the work session is to report on your various liaison responsibilities that you have with the city. So it would give us a little bit more time to talk about those things. But it, but if it only takes 10 minutes, probably wouldn't make a lot of difference unless I speak longer.
Maybe, maybe we could report and then if there's time, then we could do the ethics.
Sure. I, I can finish it whatever time you want. I can talk as much or as little about this as you'd like.
Why don't you take five or seven minutes, five to seven minutes?
Okay.
Yep.
Well, we've had, we had training on this last year and we also had an additional discussion on it recently. So, and I've had individual discussions that I can think of with at least three of you within the last couple of months. So I feel pretty good that you guys are up to date on this stuff, but we'll go ahead and go through it. The purpose in the policy, as stated in the law, says the purposes of this part are to establish standards of conduct for municipal officers, officers and employees to require these persons to disclose actual or potential conflicts of interest between their public duties and their personal interests. So the Act does two things. It sets up a disclosure system for conflicts of interest. I think Shawna recently emailed you out one for this year. So just make sure if you haven't done that, that you get that done. And describes the crimes that can be committed by public officers or employees. So the, the criminal acts are you can't use your office for, or position to benefit yourself or others. And it really focuses on economic and special privileges. Making money off of something really. It is a crime to disclose or improperly use private controlled or protected information that was acquired by way of an official position. It is a crime to use or attempt to use an official position to further substantially a personal economic interest or special privileges. It is a crime to knowingly receive, accept or take or seek a gift or economic benefit that would tend to improperly influence a person carrying out their official duties. Or, and it is a crime to receive compensation for assisting another person or entity in a transaction with the city without making written or oral disclosure to the mayor and the public. So you can't use your position to benefit yourself or others. Oh, that's the same, then I hit the wrong way. So you are required to disclose if you have any interest in any business or entity that does business with the city or is regulated by the city. You must also disclose any personal interest that come, conflicts with your public duties. How do you make the disclosure? Written disclosure is kept on file with the city and is available to the public. And then of course, a verbal disclosure. If you have, if there's something on a meeting, it's great to make those disclosures in the meeting. Even if you've done it written and it's on file with the city, it just looks better to, to also make that whenever it's involving something that you might be involved in. A common misconception is you're not required to recuse yourself. That, that is not true. You have to decide how will it be viewed by the public and does it build the community or benefit the community? And so there's nothing wrong with making a, a public disclosure about an interest you might have and then making a decision. The question is, is can you render a fair and impartial decision? That's the question I always ask you guys whenever there is a, a question as to, you know, if there is a potential conflict. So that's it.
So in other words, even though you may have a, you may have a, a conflict, it doesn't necessarily mean you wouldn't vote on something.
Correct.
Right?
And, and here's an example that would, could be an example for every single City Council member in every single city in the state. And that is, let's say there is a zone change amendment recommended for which you live in that zone. So let's say you all live in the R1 residential zone and there's a zone change. Well, it's impossible for you to not vote on that. And that one, probably you wouldn't even need to disclose it because people know that you live in a residential zone in the city. But that's just an example of something where, look, there, there's going to be amendments and there's going to be proposals that, that come about where you're going to have an interest. You, you live in the city, you are part of the city, you, you, you have businesses in the city or work for businesses in the city. That's all very common and, and normal. It's just a matter of disclosing it at the right time and in the right ways. And then of course, my advice to anyone that is going to recuse themselves is that they don't recuse themselves after all the discussion, right before the vote. Because again, not required to do this, but it is my advice that if you're going to recuse yourself, as soon as that agenda item comes up, you recuse yourself, you leave the meeting, step out in the hall. And once that agenda item is done, we'll, we come out and get you. The reason is very simple. It can appear that you are influencing the council if you're sitting in the room and certainly if you're having a discussion and not voting. So, but just simply sitting in the room could give the appearance of trying to influence the council, so.
Thank you. So I, I would say if we have any other questions personally, let's talk to Clint about it. So we can, we'll move along.
Everybody's been great. People have always, Council members, as I said, I've had recent discussions with Council members and you're great, you know, call me, email me, talk before the meeting. If it's, if it's particularly difficult, try and call me before. But if it's, if it's just something that seems like it's simple, just grab me before the meeting and I'm happy to help out too.
Thank you.
Yep.
Gary?
That's it?
Are you going to put something on?
Yeah. Clint? So what's, what we're putting up is just a list of the, and I've clearly missed some. I missed some that the mayor are on. These were some that were the more, that were actually appointed. But there's a list of the major liaison or boards and committees that you sit on. If there's things here that I've missed that you want to report on, by all means do that, but.
I think what we're looking at is if we each take probably five to seven minutes and some of us may not need to take that long, maybe some take a little longer so that we're done before seven. But I, I think this gets, it gives us all an opportunity to hear what's, what's going on with, with these assignments that we have. And so Millie, why don't we, I'll, I'll go last to Millie. Why don't you, why don't you start with, for us? And you can talk about the youth council and Center Point and anything else that you feel like you want to talk about.
Well, youth council, we haven't been able to be as active as we wanted to be this year. We have guns blazing and ready to hit the ground running and as we all know, the restrictions that a lot of women do is something. They were excited to help with the bar jay ringers concert and obviously that didn't happen. But we did get to, they had their Christmas or holiday party at the Ice Cave Room and everyone thought about it. Truthfully, I've been busy writing letters of recommendations for youth council. And a lot of them are applying for school and things like that. And they're just, they're such a great group. And we're, we actually have a call next week to brainstorm more and more things that we can do. We've been using meetings and things like that, but it's just, it's just not the same. Our last discussion was about the mask drop at Yalta High School. So that was an interesting thing. But they are just a great group. And Center Point, I actually don't have much to report on Center Point. I, I need to be better at reaching out to them. So that, that'll be on my list of being more proactive with that.
No, they are doing, I see the Sacred Gardens next. Are, are they allowing, are, did they have another one before that where they're allowing people in the seat socially distanced? Does anybody know that for sure?
Don't know. This liaison assignment is actually, this liaison assignment is actually just for the, what they call the Administrative Control Board, which is members of the RDA Board from Centerville and a couple of City Council members from Bountiful that oversee the, the money that was put in to build the building and the maintenance of the building. So it doesn't actually have anything to do with operations or anything like that. So that...
So we met, and I'm, since I'm on the same thing. So we met once in person, since Millie and I were appointed, talking about the boiler system. They have two boilers there that are really high dollar items, one of which is just given bits. So they needed funds to repair it to keep it lifting along last winter. And then over the course of the summer, they kind of did it completely replace that second blade and to use it as, now with a primary and use the other one. Maybe it's also prompted issues in the backup. But I mean, the boiler system installation was, it was like $140,000 to replace it. That was pretty pricey. But the second meeting that they held following up on that replacement was just, he was doing kind of a lot in about five minutes and it was over and done. So they have, I mean, you know, I guess it's a good thing that we're not spending a ton on the water. But that was the issue that was coming up in the past year.
Well, this is, these are, these are some of the kind of businesses who have really been, who have really been affected by, by this, this kind of pandemic. Any, anything else, Millie, that you would like to comment on?
I just have a quick question for Millie.
Sure.
What was your sense of the thought on the mask question? Like, did it seem like they were mostly in favor of one or?
Do you guys mind turning on your microphones so, for the minutes? Thanks.
Sorry. So, so they were about half and half, you would say?
About half and half.
Interesting. I was just curious about what they thought.
Well, I shouldn't say half and half. I mean, there were only about nine of us, nine of them. Probably more were in favor of changing it than not. And they all see the reasons why, but so.
Interesting. Thanks.
Very good. And Kate?
Sure. So I have, I'm going to start with mosquito abatement because it'll probably be faster. And then I made some notes, especially from our legislative policy. Policy meeting. Yeah, it's, it's, I've learned all kinds of things about mosquitoes and I now have a hoodie with a very gruesome mosquito on it that I probably won't wear in public. Thanks to this assignment, but I have it.
Like the murder hornets, now you've got the...
Yeah, it's, 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 it's a very scary looking mosquito. So the biggest issues that come, that have come up in the last years for this board is, for those of you that don't know, we, we, we use our, we spray mosquito treatments in our marsh areas around the lake. In addition to the trucks you might have seen that go around neighborhoods and you can call and request those, by the way, should you have a mosquito incident in the summer, it's free. But the, the, the big areas are spraying, the kind of the marsh areas. And of course, the cities in the, in the county that border the marsh areas care probably more than the cities that are further up the hill. But so I've learned interesting things about how we kill mosquitoes and we use a couple of different things to do that. The district has an airplane and one of the struggles we've had is that the, the person we've hired to, to fly that plane and to kind of crop dust and spray the mosquito killing agent, you have to fly at a certain height in order to get it to drop right and to kill the mosquitoes. And you know, there's kind of a skill set to, to being one of these kind of crop duster people. The guy we had has been battling cancer and so has been out of commission. And we've struggled to find another pilot that would want to do this. And we shared this pilot with, with Weber County and their district to do kind of the whole, you know, Salt, Great Salt Lake Marsh area. So we've struggled to find that. And at the same time, the Ogden Airport where we keep our plane has been raising costs and being a little bit of a pain. So Salt Lake had asked us if we wanted to go in with them on a helicopter. They're interested in building, building a helicopter hangar to do the same thing. So I've also been learning about how expensive helicopters are. They're a lot more expensive. So it turns out the district is, we've decided we're going to stick with our moderately expensive airplane as we can continue to hope our pilot gets better. The other issue is we've, they've expanded their use of drones, large drones that can also fly and drop this, this chemical to kill mosquitoes. But we've also struggled to find good drone pilots. And we've lost a couple of very expensive drones with inexperienced drone pilots. So that, those have been real struggles is, is the aerial deployment is really important to cover broadly and to cover cheaply the marsh areas that we live by. But they've also, it's been hard to find people that can do these jobs using different pieces of equipment.
Drone ones that probably like 12 year olds are the best and probably just...
Apparently they're in such demand, we, we cannot, we cannot keep them. There are so many commercial applications now for, for commercial drone pilots, people who are really good at this, that we, we have struggled to keep them employed. They get hired away or they move on to other things. And then these are really, they're not like the little drones you give your kids to play with because they've got to carry these canisters. So they're expensive drones. So those have been the interesting things I've learned about and kind of the challenges. They've also had a lot of employee challenges with COVID. They traditionally hire high school kids and college kids. They send them out on four wheelers and things like that too, to spray areas and with trucks. So they've had a lot of COVID cases and they've, they've had some budget impacts because of that this year. So that, that's my mosquito update for you is the things I now know about planes and helicopters and drones. LPC.
Can I ask you a question? So, so do you get statistics there too? I would think like on West Nile virus and things like that, do you?
Yes, every...
And is it kind of going up or can you, you know, what is the, what is the trend, Kate?
So we, they do every month, they give statistics on, on West Nile and other, you know, other things that mosquitoes carry. So we, they do, every month they give statistics on, on West Nile and other, you know, other things that mosquitoes carry. There were still West Nile cases this year. There was actually an interesting pod that apparently that broke out in Moab. And Moab doesn't really have very much mosquito sophistication. So actually Davis sent down a crew to help them do mosquito traps and do the testing. So there was this interesting kind of outbreak in this summer in, down in Moab. But ours hasn't necessarily been, we, we've had it, but it, it didn't top our current issues as a public health concern. But of course, you know, mosquitoes can be carriers for things and it could be a public health concern in some ways.
Because of what they're doing.
Yes. Yeah, so-
Kate?
Keep those numbers down.
As a kid growing up in Brigham City, we used to ride our bikes behind the mosquito abatement spray down the street.
It explains so much, Chris. So, so much.
I knew you were going to say that. Ever since that day, I've been different.
In a good way.
And for the record, the other things I've learned is, so you can request the sprays. You can also request your house not be, you know, if you have some concerns about the chemicals. I've also learned that from, I think I've had two angry Bountiful residents that wanted off. And so the, the district does have a process where if you've got issues, yeah, but you can opt out of that. Legislative Policy Committee that I serve on with the mayor and with Gary and with Galen, I don't think Galen's here. Clint, oh Clint's the new, oh, we're, we're not right on our roster then because it said Galen.
I have maybe the-
Okay. So this is a, you know, during the legislative session, a weekly assignment during the rest of the year. It's, it's a monthly check-in. It sort of fits because it entails with my day job. The three issues I thought I would mention from yesterday's meeting, which kicks off the start of the, of the weekly legislative meetings, would be Representative Ward is running a bill on accessory dwelling units. Yay, we, we were all very familiar. His, his bill would undo some parts of, of what we adopted. He's, he's seeking obviously a much broader standard of ADUs. For instance, we wouldn't be allowed to implement any parking restrictions or additional requirements for parking.
Really?
Yes. So-
Is the league-
The size of the interior.
Yeah.
Is, do you know if the league is opposed to it or?
League did take an opposed position, in part because of the preemption on city authority. Just let cities decide city by city what fits for them. You know, for instance, we have a snowplow ordinance. You know, St. George probably doesn't have a snowplow ordinance. That does factor into your parking requirements, right? So the league took an opposed position on that one. But that was, that was an interesting bill. Potential for bonding came up and that that is still something that could come up this legislative session. The legislature would bond for additional infrastructure projects. And there's an active transit component that I've been keeping my eye on for really most of the summer through all the special sessions. And the reason I've been keeping my eye on the active transit component is the speaker is particularly interested in projects, trail projects that are shovel-ready. We happen to have some of those. And we happen to have a Trails Master Plan. And so there are some lists floating around and, and I've inserted our priority list for our Bountiful Trails. Speaker being from Davis County is interested in some close to home.
Yeah, that's great.
Potentially, so.
Yay!
So that's been an issue I've been keeping my eye on. Normally, I don't think we'd, we'd pay that much attention to state bonding for, you know, I-15 or 215 or whatever. But this one is worth keeping an eye on because we, we kind of have a little thing tagged in there that if all the dominoes fell the right way, it would be good for us. And then the third category I just thought I'd mention is the list of law enforcement bills that will be coming this legislative session is pretty long. And in part, it's because of the extraordinary year that 2020 was in so many ways. And some of the things that we saw happen that we've just never seen happen in Utah before. And so a lot of those bills are, are law enforcement related and, and control of law enforcement, things law enforcement has to do. Some of them are on the opposite, you know, civil rights type protections, things like that. But there's a, a pretty big category of those. And fortunately slash unfortunately, Chief Ross has been pretty darn involved in all of those. And, and that I think was great from, from our perspective and from all cities' perspectives to have, have him be so involved. And darn it, he left right as we're about to get started. So I think he'll still play a role, but there's going to be a lot of those. And, and a lot of them are obviously, you know, our, our dear friends in Salt Lake will care about in different ways because they're the focus of some of them. But they definitely have ripples to our authority and how we run our police force. And, you know, the attitude and character and standards and things like that that, that, that we want for our city. So that's a, a large category.
Kate, it sounds like the talking to Chief Ross, he still is going to have, fortunately have a lot of influence on some of these, at least some, at least some of these things.
I think, I think he will. And, and, and I personally communicated to, that I expected him to still come help us. You know, from a law enforcement perspective, make sure we got good stuff passed with thoughtful, wise counsel that he provides.
You know, you know where his office will be, like where?
He's in the Capitol.
He is. Well, that's-
He's in the, he's in the Senate Building. So the one that's, you know, just on the side, closer to City Creek.
Okay.
On the fourth floor.
Good. Well, that, that's good. He'll be around.
Anything else, Kate?
If you have, if those are anything that you have questions on, I'm happy to address them. But those were the three, as we were in LPC yesterday, that I thought would, you, you might all be a little bit interested in.
Any quick questions that you want to have? If not, then we'll, okay.
Mayor, may I? I remembered one thing that I, is that okay?
Please.
Just, just before more people trickle in. And so Aaron Hoag, the principal of Bountiful High School, he's my brother-in-law. He's my Christian sister. And we've had some candid conversations about the mascot and things like that. And he has been surprised at how, how many personal attacks he has received. So I, I think he would appreciate any encouragement from anyone on the council. If you want his phone number or his email, I think he would appreciate just, if you feel so inclined, if you can.
Where does he live?
He lives in Farmington.
What if we just want to attack him?
Then she won't give you his phone number.
Then I won't give you his phone number. But I just know, just before, anyway, just, I, I know he would appreciate it. I know some of you have reached out, but I did ask him. I said, hey, do you feel like you've been supported by the city? And he said, he said, yes, he does. But I, I know he'd appreciate a good job. Thanks for handling it, the way you're handling it, if that's how you feel, so.
Regardless of the outcome, it was handled like it should be handled, so.
Thank you.
Sorry, that inspires one more thing for me. There is some talk about a picketing bill. You'll require, recall Dr. Dunn's home was picketed.
Governor-
The Governor Herbert's lieutenant, new Governor Cock. Because you've mentioned that he'd been so attacked, it's something that Lynn Ward, who was on the transition team, had mentioned, you know, maybe Bountiful should adopt an ordinance. I ended up suggesting maybe they should talk to the league and the Chiefs Association. The statewide thing made more sense. But it might be, that also just might be something to have on the radar that perhaps as we enter a time where, we still have really high emotions and it can be, who's president or who's your mascot? Or whether you want to kill deer? Picketing, picketing could happen.
Thank you. Kimmel, please.
Thanks, Mayor. So the history, the history commission has not been meeting in person. They, they recently had kind of an email update and they said they were grateful for the annual grant that they received from the city and they were very grateful for that. They just installed security cameras there and they're doing some work on their Sapa and Tricia there. We've had a, there was a resident that requested that they do a Halloween event where the, the Saturday before Halloween during the day, they act out different, at the cemetery, they act out different people that used to live in Bountiful and that were, were kind of historic figures. And so that's something that they're discussing that may or may not happen this Halloween or in, on future Halloweens. And then this was just kind of a side note. You probably remember that I was assigned to a committee where they were planning a Fourth of July air parade, but it didn't, it was canceled. And it was canceled due to, they were just, it was all too last minute. They were trying to request like aircraft that's hard to get. And they were trying to throw together insurance policies at the last minute. And so it just didn't pan out. But I did get an email the other day where they were saying they were considering trying to revisit the idea for this July because it would give everyone more notice. So they said some, it's Bill Ince from the Centerville City Council that's, that's heading this up. And he said that he, he said he's not sure if other cities want to do it or not. So he just was putting his feelers out there. And he said, depending on COVID, people might want to do their own celebrations. They might not want to do something citywide. So it was just sort of, you know, for whatever it's worth, they were just throwing it out there. So I'll just, you know, be in touch and as it gets closer and we'll see if it's actually going to pan out. But the other thing that I can report to you is, is being on the Planning Commission has been really interesting. And as, just as you guys know, because you guys see most everything that comes through the Planning Commission. So their focus lately has been on some ADU issues and some accessory structure issues. And it's a really, it's an awesome group. And one thing that I learned recently was in Planning Commission, they were asking about the general plan, the master plan for the city. And they asked for it and Francisco emailed it out to everyone. And, and then we talked about it the following meeting and they were saying, this is, this is, it's overdue for, we're overdue for a new general plan. And so, you know, the people that are on that Planning Commission are architects and real estate agents and lawyers and planning engineers. And it's a really qualified group. And so I really respect their opinions. And so when they told me that, I was interested to learn more about it. So I've been doing some other research and I'm glad we're talking about it at our retreat. So that's something that I think they were, they have recommended that we, that we visit.
Thanks, Kimmel. Any quick questions for Kimmel? Okay. Chris, my boy.
What about Richard?
I'm going to do you now.
Oh, okay. Oh, thank you. Okay. All right. The, because of, because of COVID, our community service council has kind of been on hold. We meet once a month. We have a very nice meeting. We discuss some of the issues that we're thinking about being a participant in. We can't have any training meetings now because of COVID, so that's kind of backed off. They're planning on starting the communications up again through the, through the, what's the word? What type of radio the, I've lost it. Ham radios, yeah, through ham radios. And they, they do meet on occasion and bring up to date, talk about ham radio and how things are going to work and that. And so we meet, we meet monthly. We had a big, big pantry and a breakfast here for the needy here during Christmas time. Looking up very well. We were able to get lots of different churches and different organizations to participate. That went, went well. We talk a lot about the, our concert in the parks. We want to be able to get that up again next year, get that going. And that's a big asset to the city. And so we're hoping that we can get that up and running again. And Richard Higginson, Richard Watson is working diligently on getting that, in that going. I think we're just on the council, service council, we're just kind of in limbo because of what's going on with, with COVID as far as starting up other things. The Bountiful Davis Art Center is moving forward. We have displays going on. And the board meets on a monthly basis. I'm very impressed with their, their foresight in trying to bring, involve more people into the board, bring more people with ideas for art that they'd like to participate in and bring them in. Our, our biggest challenge there, I think, is getting the word out with what we've got, which, which you can come and see. And so somehow possibly, if there's ways through our Bountiful City newsletter, something that we could maybe even push that more. I know we see it, but if we could do some more, because I know they ask me constantly about that, you know, if we can get more. But I said, I see it. We do go down and participate in it. And so it's, it's interesting to me, artists are different. They have a different mindset. And it's fun to be around them and see what they see and what they think and the way they like to portray some of their different art. So I just encourage anybody to go down and take a good look. I'd like to take one half a second more because it's not on there about the Veterans Park for just half a second or two. Is we've, we're finalizing two monuments right now. The Family Monument, which is looking really good, and the POW Monument, which we're just finishing that. And what's been touching to me is in the, since our dedication in November, we've had 19 POWs come forward and come to us and say, I was a POW Korea, Vietnam. No one knew. And so, and we're adding about 650 new names to the wall a month.
Wow.
I mean, it's just, it's just, it's just really doing well. And the, and the phone calls that we get, very touching, very, very touching. I sent you out kind of one of the, that happened to me. So we appreciate the city and what they did and what you allowed us to do very much so. Very much so, because it's touched a lot of lives. And as I drive around the city and I look at our beautiful Bountiful Town Square, I look at Creekside and I look at the ribbon and I think, if it wasn't for what these guys and gals did, we wouldn't have this, you know? So I'm hoping that, that we can honor and we continue to honor those men and women, those families that serve. Thank you, Chris.
So, so one, one comment, Chris. The, I've had, I've had some prominent Bountifulites who have serious, serious concerns about the Davis Art Center. And it's something you need to talk to.
I need that.
I need that. Some serious, serious concerns about that.
Let's talk about that. Let's do, let's do.
So Richard?
So we've talked a little bit about Center Point. There isn't really anything else to talk about there, at least as far as the Administrative Control Board. Power Commission, as you all know, since we've spent so much money this past year on repairs, we had an unprecedented year of unexpected repairs, especially on our hydro projects, but also on our gas turbine generators. And hopefully things are going to be calm and restful again for another 30 or 40 years on those generation facilities. We hope that they'll be as, as reliable as they have been. Not really anything to report by way of solar right now. I know we're going to have some solar discussions coming up. Kind of excited about that. The, the place where we are right now, I think many, including some on the Power Commission, have viewed as, as a, maybe a halfway point towards where we really want to be or a point on the, on the path to where we want to go. So looking forward to having those kinds of discussions. So the Power Department's in great shape. That Power Commission, as Kandlin said about the Planning Commission, they're a group of very experienced and dedicated folks that are keeping it running efficiently. And of course, we know we've got a great crew leading and doing the work there as well. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. But it's, as Kandlin said about the Planning Commission as well, most of the stuff that comes through the Power Commission, you see also. Excited about our new solar contracts. We're in good shape.
And they're very sharp, that Planning Commission.
Yeah.
You go there and you see that we've already sampled some great people there.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll just be really quick here for four or five minutes. Recreation District Board, we now have a, a master plan for the future. That was done by Y2 Analytics. There will be some bonding in, in the future. And there will be other buildings associated, satellite buildings that will be associated with the Red District. And, and I think really a lot of that comes from the confidence they've gotten from the Ice Ribbon. Just for your- Ribbon, just for your knowledge, in four and a half weeks, that ICE Ribbon made $50,000. And that's with that limited number, that's gross, limited number of, of reservations, right? I mean, they're excited about this.
Would they think about opening up some additional time windows? Because it's, it's booked out. I mean, you can't get a spot.
It's booked out there. We talked about this yesterday in our board meeting. They're trying to expand anywhere they can, you know, they're, they're.
Yeah, maybe a little bit earlier on the week.
Sundays as well, but they're, they're feeling like they're, they're in the safe zone that they want to be in. I would say that.
Okay, I have new ice skates, I'm going to try out. My other question is, what, the land around the REC District, which parts do they own and which parts are city parks? Like where could they expand? Or are they looking at other satellite locations?
Oh, oh, you, you mean, you mean the REC District? Or these would be in, even in the city.
There's other places. Okay, not right around.
They wouldn't be right there. No, they would be, they would be impossible, other places where land would have to be acquisitioned. Yep. Fire District, so I think that's all I'll say about the REC Board, it really, it's a lot of good things going on with that building and with those folks. The Fire District Board, the only thing I would say, if you've been up to building, the, the Fire Building 84, which is up on, up on Bountiful Boulevard, I mean, that, that has not worked well. It's just waters poured into that building for now, for several years. This is going to be like a, a new fire station. So they won't have a, an opening as such right now, but they'll have some things as we get closer to summer. South Davis Sewer District Board, for most of you, you know that the South Davis Surface District has a south plant, which is up, down Center Street in North Salt Lake. The other one is just straight out here over by our, our refuge dump, and that's the north plant. And the north plant now has bonded and will be doing a major renovation there in the next couple of years. But the South Davis Sewer District, in the, in the south plant now with Wasatch Resource Recovery, they are flowing gas from that, from all of the waste that's coming in there from all kinds of places. Stoper's Extra Foods, Smith's Extra Foods, now that they just need more and more food. They'll be able to produce enough energy, green energy. There's not one thing in this process that is not environmentally sound. They will be able to produce enough energy through there eventually that would be able to power a city the size of Bountiful for a year. Yeah, so I, it's really, it's a really amazing project. We've already talked about Legislative Policy Committee. You know, I'm also on the Davis Fund Board. That fun, not fun, F-U-N-D, it's not the fun board, even though it's kind of fun. The Fund Board, we are, we're doing gap financing for entrepreneurial, managerial businesses where they don't have enough money from the bank, they don't qualify, and we, as a Davis County Fund Board, if they qualify, we give them some money. It's been very, very successful. It's the reason why it's been so successful. It's the reason why Clearfield and Bountiful, we petitioned to be the first ones to get some of that money to do facades on Main Street. So that, that facade that we have at the bookstore came directly from the success of that, of that Davis Fund Board.
So is that a grant?
It wasn't a grant. It was a direct $25,000 that had to be matched by, I think we matched it by the city or they now.
You matched it by RDA funds?
How did we match that, Gary?
RDA funds.
Pardon me, yeah, RDA.
And did the, the business put anything in, does that, was that just clear $50,000 project? Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so anyway, that's just quickly on, on that, I'm trying to think of a couple of others. What did I tell you else? Oh, Davis County Health Department, hey, they're just so busy trying to get these vaccines out, coordinating with, with Walgreens and others, CVS and others to get these out, and it's just slow. We're way behind for how many, how many we're getting daily. But I heard the governor say this morning at the economic summit downtown and said, we will get this, we'll get this flowing the right way. And then Wasatch Front Regional Council, they're just, you know, it's all virtual as well, and there's just, there's, there's a lot of things we're doing to try to, try to help businesses. Everybody's trying to help businesses that are, that are not doing as well. So any questions? Just a few highlights of some of those things. There's some really great things going on with some of these boards.
Any chance we could get another round from the Davis Fund for Main Street?
Yes, I was going to say that, thank you. Because, because it was so successful for Clearfield and for us, the idea is, it may have postponed a little bit just because there weren't as many businesses who would come in to get this funding. Tomorrow I have a board meeting with the same, the same thing we have going, one business that's asking for some money. But I would suspect if we don't get some more by, before this summer, certainly we're going to get it shortly after, as soon as we kind of get this all back into the bottle that we can work with. So that's a really good question. I meant to, yeah, that's going to be ongoing because it's been, it's been very successful. Anything else? If not, let's take a break, and we'll be back in three minutes.